Like to start the town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, October 19th at 7:05 PM. Do a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone, nation, sovereign, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mayor Viglione is absent. Deputy Mayor Zampano.
Here.
Member Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Judy. Counselor Downs.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Godd.
Here.
And Counselor Pellicia.
Minutes of the previous meeting, October 5th, 2021.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So we'll get into the regular town council meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, Economic Development Commission.
I did not attend their meeting, which was last week. I don't know if Mike, if you haven't.
Yes, I did. They unfortunately did not have a forum, but we still did discuss some of the items on the agenda just for, we had Warren Laneskow from Red Rover Creative talking about the Local is Good and still progressing on that. I gave them an update on the structural programs, ARCA funds, kind of walked them through what I've been telling the council in terms of the process and analysis. And then they got into some work with the intern about the agro tourism brochure, which is coming along. I think it's going to look really nice. And then there was a few other items, but I excuse myself and they continued on, so that was pretty much.
Did they launch the Local is Good?
No, not yet. She's still looking at, there were some bugs in it that I think she found and wanted to reprogram before launching and so.
Because I know they were doing like a soft launch with a select group of businesses and then, I mean, the big one, I believe, was like January of next year, was the beginning of next year.
Yeah, so I think they're on track to try and do that smaller group of maybe 40 or 50, so try it out and soft launch and then go into the formal. So a few things to tweak and then so work the bug down.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Parking and rec.
They met on October 5th, but I do not have any update on that meeting.
Police Commission.
Police Commission met on October 12th. The police chief reviewed the budget to date and the commission wanted me to share with the town council that there have been some unanticipated expenses because of the building. The AC in the building on the top floor died and Ash had to rebuild it and that cost $2,000. They had to buy five dehumidifiers for the building because of the problems they've had and that was a thousand. They experienced some electrical problems with the building, a short circuit, that was another $2,000. So there's some other small costs in terms of toilet repairs and carpet, but they want the town council to be aware of the fact that these are continuing unanticipated expenses because of the building. The chief also informed the commission that the fiber installation project is kind of at a sales pace. They've had some problems getting into Evergreen Woods because of COVID in terms of finishing that and Frontier has not actually finished all the installations, so that's kind of on hold. They had a coffee with a cop at the senior center, which I guess was quite successful. They had about 20 people that attended it and really enjoyed that. And something very interesting, North Branford Police Department has been invited to be part of a beta test of a program called Prepared Live. And what that is, is when someone calls into the dispatch, if the person's calling with a cellphone, the dispatcher can then connect with that person through text and then they can, they can use photo and they can see each other so that if there's something that the dispatcher needs to help the person who's making the call, he can actually see him and help him and talk him through things. So that's something that North Branford's one of a few towns that are going to do the beta testing on that. So that would be very interesting and helpful to people. And that's probably about it.
Thanks, Marie.
Marie, when they do that, you dial 911 and how do you actually?
You dial 911 and you have a cellphone. The dispatcher can text you and tell you to turn on your camera and then they can see each other. Because sometimes they have to talk somebody through something, like if somebody's had a heart attack, this way they can see the person, they can talk to them. It's a beta test, though. It's only something that they're trying out in some towns. But North Branford was selected to be one of them. I thought that was a really nice thing.
Thank you.
Fire Commission.
So I attended the fire commission meeting on the 7th. It was interesting because when the chief gave his report, he provided a report for response times for the ambulance on the North Branford side of town. And there's been some concern and I was actually contacted by a citizen about the ambulance response times on this side of town as well. And to complicate matters further on top of just response times is also when they have two, two calls at the same time, the response time on the second call is also not, not as good as it should be. AMR doesn't always have units readily available. Sometimes they have to, if one of our ambulances is at the hospital, they have to respond from New Haven back here, which further delays things. So like I said, I was contacted by a citizen, so it was just ironic that the chief, I didn't know this ahead of time, the chief was talking about that as well. And I stood up and I suggested that they start a committee to look into improving the response times. Because if you look at, you know, probably 70 to 80% of our calls are on the North Branford side of town, the ambulance house is all the way over in the center of Northford. So, you know, that, that didn't, that doesn't help and it didn't make a lot of sense, I think, putting it over there. So just some of the ideas that were kind of thrown around at the meeting were just, you know, AMR ambulances, they stage in certain areas that are, you know, high activity areas. So, you know, maybe during, so what the committee hopefully is going to do is going to look at this, look at the stats of what time of the day, what days of the week, where the volume of the calls is the heaviest, and maybe try to, you know, have an ambulance stationed out of Company One or the PD or something where they're closer to that side of town during those times. Again, that's not definite that that's going to happen, but they're going to look into that. And then they're also going to examine possibly staffing during those heavy call times, staffing two ambulances at the same time. But that's basically what the committee is going to look at. The next meeting, next month's meeting, is when they will actually establish the committee and appoint members to the committee to start looking at that. But just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that and that that is, you know, we've had, I don't, Anthony, if you help me out here a little bit, have we had six, has there been, there might be seven now after the pedestrian that was hit. How many fatalities did we have so far this year?
Five, Laneskow, off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, last I knew, there was like six. And with the pedestrian accident that recently happened, that might have been seven, so don't hold me to that number, but it's been significant. And, you know, when you have serious accidents like that, response time is everything. So they are taking a look at that and they're going to come back with some, hopefully with some good recommendations.
Thanks, Mike. Board of Ed, Town Council Communications.
No meeting.
Planning and zoning, they have a meeting this Thursday, but Mike, did you want to comment on the last meeting?
Yeah, I did attend for that and there was, there was a lot on there. And they had, first and foremost, the executive session, they did that upfront with respect to the being briefed on the propane matter. And then they came out after that and voted for 4-0 to appeal, if you will, to file certification to take it up with the Supreme Court. So I think the individuals, residents in the audience were relieved to hear that. And then the chairman had explained that that was the vote is to essentially appeal. So, yeah, so they took care of that. They had to table a few items, but I can just quickly go through and mention that the, one of the items is on the agenda for the council tonight, which they dealt with, which was the opt-out language regarding parking spaces and dwelling units. So you'll see later on in the agenda. It's a two-step process by which the P and Z takes action. There's a memo in your packet. The council will follow that if they agree in order to opt out. And there are reasons within the memo that Victor has provided for the council in terms of their rationale as to why we don't think this should apply for North Branford opting out. There was some, there was also the, the one-year extension on the moratorium for cannabis. So they voted on that as well, four nothing on that, to extend that to 2022 in order to, you know, look at what's coming from the state in terms of information and research. There was the site, a couple of site plans that got tabled that'll be happening on the 21st. The new planner has started, started yesterday, is on board, working in transition. So Eric Knapp will be there with Victor Benny at Thursday's meeting. We're going to cluster tomorrow morning within Marino, just to make that, sure that that transition is smooth and bring everybody, you know, make sure we're all on the same page, but it's working through. So Eric's already on board, he'll be working with Victor and we'll take care of the P and Z meeting on Thursday. And in the interim, they also appointed Eric as, as the interim zoning enforcement officer is certified and has credentials to do that. So they made, they took that action as well. So he can fill that. We are in the process of looking and reviewing for as the EO and we'll see if we, we have to find a candidate within that pool and hopefully appoint somebody at somewhere November timeframe. That was it.
Thanks, Mike. Finance Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Project Building Committee. Do you have anything on that, Mike?
A few things, yeah. One of which, we'd circulated options and times for a groundbreaking ceremony and the two options were Tuesday, the 26th, 9:00 AM, or Thursday, the 28th, at 1:00 PM. And just looking for some feedback from the council.
What was the second one?
I'm sorry, Michael. I'm sorry?
What was the second one?
Thursday. Thursday, the 28th at 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thursday's better for me, but.
Okay, I think I heard from Tom and Ron, Thursday is.
Did you get Mark's comp for that?
No objections to Thursday, then? Okay. Yeah, if you, if you could, I just want to confirm how many will be coming. You do it, you know, email me, give me a call, just so they have the proper safety hats, shovels, that sort of thing. So I will not be joining you, so I want to make sure I set that up for Gilbane, Amar, and Rusty from Q and M, Michelle. So we'll take care of that. So the, the meeting last night, permanent project for the high school, there wasn't anything on the police department. They're still obviously going through their analysis and valuation for the two sites. And so we've really focused on the high school and a lot of the discussion last night, or a great deal of the discussion last night centered around security that I can't really obviously go into detail about, other than it was more of a impact, financial impact in terms of what the dollars of the bid were and the structure of the bid. So they're working their way through that and that's, that's ongoing. But the project is moving along and they're just, you know, coordinating a bunch of scheduling. I was hoping that Al would be here. One of, Al Rose, you know, he didn't actually raise it last night, but I think maybe the vice chairman, Tom Bailey, raised the issue of the building official and the capacity of what's coming, imminently coming in terms of ramping up the high school project. And I explained that the request came forward from them. It's on your agenda, later on the agenda for discussion and possible action on a full-time AVO position. So they're a little concerned about that and of course, you know their recommendations. I'd like to see that. They also took up discussion on the reimbursements and we have Marnie Lassick, I think, from CGS in terms of acting as the owner's rep. So there's some issues around the state and reimbursement for that position, that function. So we're going to be talking internally tomorrow with Jeff DiNoprio, who's the attorney that specializes in that. And we'll probably have to go to the state to talk to them about that issue. But everything seemed to be lining up and, you know, at this point, they're, they're on target. And then, as I said, nothing on the PD, but the MBIS roof, now masonry slash roof project came up. They had asked Rusty for a ballpark analysis estimate, if you will, on the structure. If you remember, the option three was sort of the consensus of the, of the body, that that would look, look best. But if you remember, there was a structural analysis, engineering analysis that had to be done to see if that particular gabled roof system would be supportive on, on the building. The price tag for that, I believe, $35,000. So that's the ask of, of the permanent project, or that's the recommendation they're giving it here to this body. As I said, they can't engage Rusty until that's approved, obviously, the council. So I don't know if that's something, and that came from last night, I don't know if that's something you want to add to the agenda or you want to just wait until the next council comes in for the November meeting. But that's the estimated price tag for that analysis, to go with that option on the gabled roof system.
And that's just for the engineer?
Engineer, right.
Okay.
What would it be for the other options? Same?
Well, he, he didn't get that far. And again, he was just, it was more of a, I think there was a calculation of doing that.
The one everybody liked.
The one everybody liked, exactly, yeah, yeah. So that's where we're at. So I, and again, maybe Michelle, maybe I've missed something, but I think that was the, the heart of that, of the meeting last night. Meet again Monday if necessary, depending on what they have with the analysis with Jeff DiNoprio and also Bill Silver and Silver Petrocelli Architects are ready. I'm not sure they're going to be ready for Monday, but probably the next meeting on the evaluation. And that might actually take a little bit longer, I'm not sure.
Thanks, Mike. Town managers' report.
Yeah, I have the weekly COVID update analysis. And if you just flip to the third page, we're, we're holding steady. It's, it's a decline, no new cases, really just kind of flatlining trend, much lower than obviously that we've seen for September and August. So it's trending again the right way, except for that unfortunate fatality that we had earlier in the month. The numbers are, are down and we continue to try and push for the vaccinations and continue to monitor the information coming out on boosters. So again, jury's still out on that. There's, I mean, little pieces of information coming on, on boosters, but we're waiting for guidance from E. Shore in terms of any publication or announcement or press release or anything like that.
Mike, they give you any indication as far as like other variants or anything else that's coming down the pike or is it after Delta, that's pretty much been it?
Great question, yeah. As far as I know, it's just Delta. There are no other variants that I'm aware of that could be. I just, I can't speak to that. I'm just aware that it's just Delta.
Thank you.
So we're, I'm just trying to find the page in terms of respect to our, our sequencing of, yeah, our vaccination rate is for first vaccination, 74.6%. Both fully vaccinated at 71%. So those numbers are just creeping up a little bit, but I think those are significant numbers. You know, when you look at the other towns around us, only, you know, Branford slightly higher, Madison Gopher slightly higher, we're, we're running slightly higher than East Haven. So I think those, those numbers are healthy numbers and again, just keep trying to push them north, higher as much as we can. So I think I added in a, we had a couple of slides in there, yeah, on the upcoming COVID vaccination clinics. Another one on the 23rd, the North Branford Fire Department Company Four, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 is the next one. So there's a slide in there, we're putting that information out and trying to.
Does that include, Mike, does that include boosters for the people that have been recommended for boosters now?
Yeah, I think there's opportunity for, for boosters. I'll have to, I'll have to get you a follow-up answer to that. I don't, I shouldn't speak to that really. I don't know.
I think that's only recommended now for like 65 and above or something like that.
Right, small group. And obviously, the other, the other thing we're tracking is, is just the announcements and for children in terms of vaccinations. So waiting for information to shake out on that. But overall, yeah, you know, just flatlining numbers, so the trend is good.
Okay, housing, housing plan survey.
Yeah, I just added that in as a more of a informational, you know, they've extended it. The COG is working on a housing, regional housing plan, having municipalities, residents give comment. So we put that on the website, I've added it in here to the, to the packet, but you just, there's a QR code there. You can go hit that or hit the, the link and, you know, take the survey if you, if you're interested. It's just trying to boost more, more responses in the survey, it'd been, been low and just wanted to do what we could to promote information on that, put it out to the public, so.
All right. Is that it? Is that all you have, Mike?
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Community events and presentations, presentation by Finalsite.com on website design. Well, we'll have to hold. I'm sorry? Do the public hearing first. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we can do the, we can do the presentation of plaque to town council members.
Oh, you would do that, sure.
Right?
Yeah, because it's.
We got time to do that.
Yes, you can quickly do that.
So on behalf of North Branford and the North Branford Town Council, we want to recognize four individuals that have committed their time for, for quite a while, dedicated their time to help North Branford move along. First is our mayor, Robert Viglione. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council, 11/14/17 to 11/12/19. Town Council, 11/12/19 to 11/9/21 as mayor. Planning and zoning commission, 2/4/92 to 10/24/95 as an alternate. So that's, unfortunately, Bob's not here to accept his, so we'll just table that for him. Our next is on behalf of North Branford and the North Branford Town Council, Michael J. Duty. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for the years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council from 11/11/03 to 11/15/05 as mayor. 11/15/05 to 11/13/07. From 11/13/07 to 11/10/09 as mayor. 11/10/09 to 11/15/11 deputy mayor. And from 11/15/11 to 11/12/13, 11/10 to, 11/10/15 to 11/14/17 as mayor. 11/14/17 to 11/12/19 as mayor. 11/12/19 to 11/9/21. He was a member of the Agricultural Commission from 19/18/07 to 11/15/11. Conservation Commission from 12/11/90 to March 19/94. Inland Wetlands Agency from 1/17/89 to 7/17/90. Planning and zoning commission from 1/3/89 to 7/17/90. And Human Relations Commission from 12/15/87 to 1/5/89. So as we can see, Mike are here, Mike's been, Michael had been serving the community for quite some time. And again, he's not here, so we'll save that for him. So our next one is, so in honor of the North Bran, the town of North Branford and North Branford Town Council, presented to Joseph E. Fawnin, this commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council, 11/13/07 to 11/10/15. From 11/10/15 to 11/14/17 deputy ma, as deputy mayor. From 11/17 to 11/12/19. And from 11/12/19 to 11/9/21. He served on the pension committee from 11/13/07 to 11/9/21. The Finance Subcommittee from 11/07 to 12/10/13. And from 2/19/19 to 11/9/21. Also served on planning and zoning from 3/3/87 to 3/6/91. From 3/6/91 to 11/8/07. He was the chair from 9/8/00 to 11/8/07. And also was part of the Inland Wetlands Agency from 4/21/87 to 5/15/91. And that's, we want to present to Joe.
I'd like to say, it has not always been a pleasure. It has been a true privilege and an honor. So I thank each and every one of you and every citizen of the town of North Branford. Thank you all.
Good to pick up. Okay, and then, in honor of the town of North Branford and also the North Branford Town Council, we want to present Tara Downs. This is. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council member from one five twenty-one to eleven nine twenty-one. And we want to present to you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to say, I think we'd all be better off if Lou, Peter and Austin were here. But it's been a pleasure serving with all of you for this.
All right, so.
I think we have to read the, the notice of the public hearing, so you can. Well, you have to open the public hearing first. So the notice of the public hearing, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven thirty PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash one, which amends chapter eighty-eight of the Code of the Town of North Branford, entitled Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Areas as follows. The additions are in bold and the deletions are in brackets. So it's number eighty-eight dash thirteen, Rules of Conduct, letter H. So the deletion is alcoholic beverages, controlled dangerous substances, alms, gambling. While in a public park or recreation area, all persons shall conduct themselves in a proper and orderly manner. And in particular, no person shall bring alcoholic beverages or controlled dangerous substances, drink or use the same at any time, nor shall any person be under the influence of intoxicating liquor or a controlled dangerous substance in a park or recreation area. So the addition, letter H, prohibited activities. While in a public park or recreation area, all persons shall conduct themselves in a proper and orderly manner. And in particular, no person shall, one, be under the influence of drugs and/or alcohol, or possess, drink, smoke, burn, light, consume or use at any time any of the following. A, alcoholic beverages. B, cigarettes, cigars, pipes or similar devices, whether containing wholly or in part tobacco and/or cannabis, including but not limited to electronic delivery systems or vapor products containing tobacco and/or cannabis. For purposes of this ordinance, all terms used in this ordinance, unless otherwise stated, shall have the same meaning as the definition set forth in the Connecticut General Statutes, as the same may be amended. C, illegal drug and controlled substances being used without a prescription. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this sixth day of October, two thousand twenty-one. Lisa A. Valenti, MMC, North Branford Town Clerk. Publication date, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, in the sound.
So the public hearing's open. Do we have any public comment? So, no public comment, so public hearing closed.
Seven thirty-nine.
Seven thirty-nine. Okay. Okay, so back to number five, community events and presentations, presentation by finalsite.com on the website design.
In our continuing quest to redo our website tonight, we have Adam Reiser from Final Site. And in your agenda, there's about a half dozen towns, websites that he has done. Closest to us being Madison and Amden, Southfield Burn and Ellington, West Hartford as well. And Adam's going to be doing a little presentation for us tonight, so we'll drop the screen and climb into the organ.
Thank you, I appreciate the introduction.
This is your business, Adam?
This is not my business, no. Awesome, all right. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. My name is Adam Reiser from Final Site. And Anthony has invited me here to give a little, little presentation about, perfect, about our web software and what we would like to do for the town of North Branford. So, got a really quick agenda for you all, hope not to take up too much of your time. Going to get a little bit into detail about Final Site as a company, who we are. We're going to take a quick look at some other websites we're doing in the state of Connecticut and potentially take a dive into the backend of the software. Although, Anthony, I'm not sure, is that, is that appropriate for the council? Okay, so then, even shorter, perfect, we'll skip it. And then we'll hopefully have plenty of time for you to ask any, any question that you have. So how's that sound? Anything in particular you'd like me to address, or does that, that sound good?
Tom, can you?
Awesome. All right, so Final Site is based in Glastonbury, Connecticut, so about forty-five minutes away. And we have been here for twenty-three years now, making websites in the public industry. So we really like to think of ourselves, not just a software company, but full communications partners for all of our clients. And what that means is, if you, if the town would have any questions about things like, when's the best time to be posting on social media? How frequently should we be sending out email newsletters? You'll have a dedicated client success manager there to help you achieve all of your communication goals. So it's not just like WordPress or any software like that where you just install it on your own. We are there for you twenty-four seven to support you. We offer fifteen-minute emergency response time for any outages or other severe emergencies. So we, we really want to make sure we're there for all of our clients. Slide's got rearranged there. So, as part of the design process, you'll be paired with a variety of folks on our team. Our, our company as a whole has about three hundred employees. And at any given time, you'll have about ten or so working on your project. So it depends a little bit on the design process that you choose to go through. But you will be paired with the design team, a project manager who's dedicated to your project, a client success manager who is there for those more strategic calls, those strategic questions, as well as obviously our support team who's there for you twenty-four seven. All right, so, our platform is run off of a proprietary software called Composer. So we make it super, super easy to use for all town employees. We know that not everyone has a technical background. But at the same time, a lot of different departments are going to need to have their hands on this. So we make it really easy for anyone to be able to go in, make changes, keep things consistent across the website. With that, let's go ahead and take a look at a few other websites that we're doing. So the first one I want to show is the town of West Hartford. And actually, it looks like they are having some telephone issues. So they are using one of our features, it's called a page pop, to let users know what's going on. As we scroll through here, we see they have a nice video highlighting what's going on in town with some quick links to some really common resources. So these are things that most residents need to do. If they want to quickly find a permit, if they want to quickly come and make a tax payment, it's right there for users. Continuing to scroll through, we have a quote from the mayor. Little image there, as well as some news from the town. So we can scroll through, users can come through and see exactly what's going on in town. If we want to see what's going on in the town parking lot, we can click on it and scroll through. And again, this is all content that the town themselves have created. So we've enabled them to be able to come in and create this content on their own. They don't need anyone's help to, you know, submit a ticket and say, hey, we want to make this change. Hey, we want to make this news article, can you put that on our site? They're able to do that completely themselves. Continuing to scroll through, we have a calendar about what's going on in town. Again, we can cycle through and see what's going on. They have a library board meeting, it's a virtual meeting, if we click on that, we get a little bit more information. And then a few links here, just highlighting the town again. Instead of just having a little button saying meetings and agendas, they are taking the opportunity to highlight Blueback Square. Just really make the town stand out, pop, attract residents. So, any quick questions about what West Hartford is doing? Awesome.
Does this website work on, on a mobile?
Absolutely. So, I will show you what it looks like on a mobile.
While you're pulling that up, who did the video content? Did somebody in the town do that?
Yes, so this was, this was done by the town.
And they add it, or you add it?
And they added it themselves. So they can add anytime, if they want to put a winter video up, right? As, you know, winter season rolls around, everyone's got their lights up in town, the snows, looks all nice. They could swap that video out nice and easy. So I have my little, little test phone up here. And as you see, everything has scaled nicely to fit on the mobile device. Those buttons, oops, clicking too hard. Those buttons rearrange. Everything kind of stacks. Refresh, this was stale. What's going on here? Glitching out a little bit, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they are website.
The wifi?
Wifi, don't want me to try and get out?
Um, no, it's all right. I think the, the point was, does it scale to a mobile website? Perfect, asking the good questions. So, we'll take a look at Ellington. So obviously, West Hartford's a little bit bigger. Ellington, I think, is roughly the same size, maybe bits more similar demographically than West Hartford. They came to us and they said, we really want to make our website kind of like the town's version of Google. So we helped them out. We created this design where they have this very prominent search feature first thing. We are also working with them to do their different departments. So we're doing their library website, their Parks and Rec website. As well. So, as we scroll through here, we have their quick links coming up. Most important things, obviously, half of what a town website does is agendas and minutes, right? You're always posting those up there. They have their featured news and events going on? And the wifi is just not cooperating today, huh? And then they should have their, their calendar. If we take a look at their, their full calendar here, they have a little page pop notification about their Board of Education meetings. They're on a separate website, so, awesome. So they have an awesome feature here where they allow users to filter by calendar. So I know this was something, I was taking a look at your website and honestly, I thought it was a little lacking in terms of the calendar department. That's one of the major features a town website should have, should really be able to display a prominent calendar, what's going on, keep it well organized for town residents. So if we take a look here, now we have all of the various calendar events going on, organized by, by type. And then, for example, if we click on this Board of Selectment meeting here, we have the ability to link right to the agenda as well as the Zoom link, if you wanted to take a look at that. And then, coming back to the homepage, if we scroll down to the bottom, hopefully it'll load here, we have a social media feed being pulled in. So they're actually pretty active on Twitter and Facebook. And they are pulling in their posts with our feeds module. And it feels like a, a little bit like a part of the website. So, I know a lot of other software, it'll just do a standard code embed to pull that content off of social media. With our feeds module, we pull it in as part of the design. So it just has a more cohesive feel to it, really make it feel like part of the website. And users are still able to fully interact with it. Excellent. So one more website, if we have time to take a look, is town of Soufield. So they have a page pop here coming up with notifications about registering for elections, it looks like. Page pops are obviously, as you can tell, a pretty popular feature with their towns. And they're actually, they're actually putting a lot of content on here. So obviously, very important to town residents to quickly access this information. They want to make sure everyone can see it and get the links to where they got to go. We'll close this. So they have a, a similar design to town of West Hartford, but they've taken it, making it their own. Quick links to the important stuff here, like a staff directory. So they have all of the staff, the town staff listed here, as well as their information. They could even take this a step further if they wanted to and add photos for everyone, right? So if you want to put the board member contact information up on, on the website and have all your smiling faces up there, you could do that. We don't want to see this again. They have a little notice from their first selectmen here, as well as a video highlighting their town. The internet just doesn't want to play with me today. And, as well as their news and their calendar. So they actually have a couple of links off to their boards and commissions, again, So they actually have a couple of links off to their boards and commissions, again separating it from their community calendar. Awesome. All right, so that about wraps it up for, for the few examples we want to take a look at, and hopefully should give you plenty of time to fire away with some questions.
Adam, is, is West Hartford the only one using the video? It seems to me that, I don't know, I see it's almost distracting, but maybe that's preferred. I, I think the Suffield with the, the first selectman's message and the video on the side versus you come into a homepage and there's a video playing.
Right.
I don't know, it just gave me throw me off a little bit.
I think that's a good observation. I think that also kind of goes along with West Hartford's personality, right? Where they, you know, it's, it was showcasing the center in Blueback Square, they just had to have it all in there. It's not too common to do, honestly. I think in the past, that might have been a bigger trend to have a video header, but we're seeing that kind of trend away from, from being commonplace.
How effective is the search bar, the Google type search bar? I know sometimes you go on some of these websites and they have them, and you type in what you're looking for, and you just never seem to get what you're looking for. So how, how well does that work?
So we actually ha, we have our own software to handle the internal searches. I know some towns still use like a Google custom search, which I think might be what you're talking about, where it'll even like show ads in it sometimes. So, I'll take it back to Ellington, because obviously that's what they really wanted to, to look after. We just searched like agendas here. They are using what we call our advanced search feature. If nothing's working, Jesus.
Well, we have a lot of people online, right here.
Let's try again, let's reconnect. That'd be, that'd be a big choke right there. That shouldn't be happening.
Want to hop online?
How about just, maybe it's not a, not online.
Hmm, that should, I, you know, I show this website off all the time, and should be working.
Works.
Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Even without that, I, I definitely like the idea of having, you know, having options as opposed to just a big search engine.
That's, that's honestly super disappointing and embarrassing. I would recommend that you all go to ellington-ct.gov, maybe on your phones, and test it out. If you're not connected to wifi, maybe if you're on your data, or maybe when you get home, take a look, I promise you, it's going to work. Not, like, again, not sure why it's not working right now, I think it is the, you got it?
Yeah, it's because of.
It's the wifi, right?
The wifi pulse.
All these things came up.
All right. So yes, all the agendas did come up, and with those advanced search features, you can even direct some searches a little bit with some synonyms. So for example, if users were searching for, I don't know, what's another word for agenda? Maybe something like outline, board outline, something like that, you could see what users are searching for, recognize those synonyms, and then direct those searches to the proper results. So, definitely some advanced functionality there with our, with our search features. Other questions? Actually, one thing I did want to touch on, is those agendas and minutes, if we can get them to load. So obviously, super common aspect of a town website is, you're uploading all the agendas and the minutes from all the board meetings. So here, Ellington is listing out all their different boards. If we come to their Board of Selectmen, we can come quickly access those PDFs. Not loading, that's fun. But, the neat thing about this is that they don't have to come to all these different pages, go to the Board of Finance page, go to the Board of Selectmen page, and come to this page that lists them all out, when they're uploading an agenda. They'll just upload them in one spot, and it'll automatically apply across all the pages of the website, that those agendas need to be displayed. So, we have the Board of Selectmen accordion here, but if we go to their Board of Selectmen page, we should see that we also have agendas and minutes here. So again, they're just going to one spot in Composer, uploading their PDF, and it's applying across all the different pages of the website. And then, same thing, you can see that with the calendar on the, the right side over here. They're only uploading, making changes one spot on the calendar, and those will apply all of the various places across the website where that calendar's living. I'm not sure exactly what calendar software the town is using currently. Anthony, do you happen to, are you using Google, are you?
I'm, I'm.
Is it just uploading PDFs?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's part of the software.
All right, so we can definitely integrate, if you are, end up using Google calendars down the road, something like that, we have full integrations for those kinds of software.
Deputy Mayor Sam Panell, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
I was just wondering, who the people were that helped you develop this? As, as far as, was it, you know, the town manager, was it?
So who within the town is working on this?
Helped you develop these?
Right. So, Ellington actually has a web and social media manager. To, who, who manages the town here, or who manages the website here?
I think that would be Rose Angelina.
Web? Web, West Hartford, the IT department handles the website. So that's typically what we'll see is, either the IT department is handling it, or you might have someone kind of in the, in the town manager's office, or, you know, first selectman's office, depends on the town. So if we come into administration here, Julia Connor is their executive assistant slash website.
And then they would also be the ones that would be integrating and uploading.
Right, exactly. So they also probably, because this was actually a big part of why they went with us, is they wanted the different departments to be able to handle their own pages. So, potentially someone from the finance department is managing the finance department side of things, making updates to these pages, or potentially uploading these audits and reports. So that way, Julia in the first selectman's office isn't doing everything on the website.
But then the approval would go through before uploading?
Right, so we do have a very granular permission structure. So you can set it up where you have users from particular departments who are able to go in, make those changes, save them, and then maybe you have one or two administrative users who then approve to publish everything to the website. Anthony, any points, questions?
No, I'm reminding you, we have, I think, one or two more folks coming in, I'm hoping you're garnering different tidbits that you like from the various designers we have coming in. And the process will be an RFP, probably sometime in December, January timeframe, so we could have it in time for the budget, and get this going, and hopefully have a successful update to our website.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
My name is Adam Reiser. I have a business card for you. R-E-I-S-E-R.
Got the screen ready?
Can I take you to that one? Thanks.
Next is citizen statements and petitions and correspondence.
Good evening. It's not too often I get to say this, but you're, first time I've ever seen the town council in the dark about what to do next. I mean, cutting the budget, but come on, light bulbs? First of all, I want to thank all of you, because this will be the last time you're all together as, as much as you can be together. You've gone through a couple of hard years, you've carried it well, and now you're going to be fragmented. We're losing a statesman, we're losing a mayor, and Mike Dutty's chasing cows out west. So you've got Marie and Rosie, you're going to be your senior, be careful with that word, your most senior in seniority personnel. You're getting new people. You were new people at once. And I've always said, I'm in favor of the one agenda system. When people come on to a commission, it's not a coronation, giving them full powers, they're not becoming the pope of the town or anything like that, they're donating their time to a commission. Too many times this past year, it's gotten way out of control with what has happened in some of these, and luckily, we've been able to pull them back and get them back to where they should be. In the future, with the new council, you guys are the overseers and gals of what happens in the future. This town's got a tough future ahead of it, but I think with more control and better observation of what's going on, we can move forward in a nicer way, and, and stop some of this branching out into different areas where people don't belong on these commissions. And so I'm hoping for the best, we'll see. I have sent you all an email, I'm definitely in favor of the new PD going down to where the old PD started years ago, in the basement of the building on the hill. Open space, you can never get back. Once one municipal building ends up on that field, the field's gone. And, and that's all we got, we don't have, you've got the hill, maybe someday the town hall can go up on the hill, who knows? But the backfields are still Larry's bread and butter, and they can't be turned over for soil because of the river, so you have to go strictly with hay back there. And to open it up to another farmer to raise vegetables, you'll have the farm river full of all our good North Branford loam going down into East Haven. So there's not a lot of options, and there are, but there aren't. So aesthetically, money-wise, it's a hard decision to make, but I, I think it's, you've heard from the chief, he knows what he wants. And they don't work out of that building, they work out of their cars, they've been strategically placed all around the town during the day, so you, a police officer's pretty readily available, they're not down at the station waiting for a call, they're always mobile. And, the election's in a couple of weeks. It's a little disappointing that nobody stepped up to fill so that at least could have one vote count, you know, every vote's going to count. And that's why Rose and I discussed at the Board of Education Dinner, everybody's still got to vote, because you have to elect a mayor and a deputy mayor. We have this unique system, when in the past, it was really, there were more candidates, and it was not automatic like it seems to be this time. So Tara, I'm sorry to see you go. Joe, you've been beaten, been beat up for many, many years, you, I'm planning to tell you, and when that didn't beat you up enough, you jumped into this frying pan, and I think you, I've always learned that Joe doesn't say something, but when he does, you better listen. He filters it, massages it.
Could you say that to my wife?
No, my wife and your wife talk, so I got to be careful. They're classmates. And so, we're going to lose a lot of experience, knowledge, but he's got to have a life too once in a while. It's a hard job for the new people coming on, because as soon as you hit the budget season, you, you have more meetings than you could ever possibly attend, and it's, you know, they're not five-minute meetings either, you guys have got to crunch numbers like nobody's business. But you've always been successful, that's why I love living in this town. You've always been up to the challenge. I'm glad to see the party lines are kind of fading away, and the tasks are coming together, and you guys are performing. So you guys won't be the newbies anymore in a couple of weeks, right? It'll be your turn to break them in, because it seems like when somebody comes on, they, they come on overexcited and underinformed, and I'll leave it at that. So the best of luck to those of you that are coming back, and the best of luck to those of you who are leaving. I'll still be here to bug you, thank you.
Number seven, resignations and appointments. Resignation of Joan Tudor from the Economic Development Commission. B, resignation of Harry Dulak from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And C, reappointment of Virginia Fallon to the library board term to expire 12/31/2024.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Who moved it, Marie or?
Okay.
Thank you. While in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Unfinished business, discussion in action. Update on North Branford, excuse me, update on North Farms Park fence? Anything on that?
Yeah. Yes, so, working with Fran, we've gotten a third-party vendor to go and address the fence issues, so the vendor was going around the entire fence and putting the proper number of fence ties that were not put on, stretching the fence so that it was installed properly, changing the bolts to the proper size at the bottom, I believe they're an inch and a quarter they're supposed to be, and replacing the south gate with the proper hinges, and installing the gate on the front, on the north side. That will then complete the fence. So we are going to, I don't know if it's actually done yet, I'll find out tomorrow, but we are going to make that Halloween date that I promised, although that's not going to end the conversation. So the town remains in possession of the $39,000, more or less, that it was using for the successful bidder. What we will do is we'll utilize funds out of those, out of that amount, to pay this third-party vendor, and then we, the balance, we will deal with the successful bidder with. Now, we just got in last week, a lawsuit filed by the successful bidder for our failure to pay. I, I kept trying to explain to his lawyer that we, once we corrected his client's work, there'll be some value that his client's entitled to, and we got the materials and whatnot, but we have to first fix our damages, so that we can, you know, make sure that we're not overpaying. He disagreed, you know, he's taken the position that his client substantially performed. And I said, okay, you know, I have four vendors, four fence vendors that disagree with you, but we'll leave it for a court to determine one day. So there is a lawsuit that was just filed, the return date is November 23rd, that's really an appearance date, that's a date that will set this lawsuit in motion. I don't think it's going to be a terribly difficult case, but we'll probably, if we don't resolve the matter, we'll probably have a trial in, in about 18 months. So that's where it is. So, but for purposes of the town, the fence will be usable within the next week, and this will just be kind of background, in the background that will just keep you updated on.
Thank you. I think B, we're just holding that?
Right.
And then C, review of, we're also holding C too, I think. That's not, right? Those are just. are just place markers? And then review and discussion on draft 2021 proposed resolution adopting an ordinance regulating cannabis?
Yes, and I had provided suggested motion for you based on the scheduled hearing tonight and hearing, no comment from the public. If you want to go forward, just suggested motion to approve the language that you'd laid out for the ordinance.
So I'd like to make the motion. I move that the town council adopts the proposed ordinance 2021-1 entitled Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Areas as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, E, review of draft fraud policy.
That's just the policy. That was before the last meeting. I just created a motion for you to act on to adopt it.
So I'll make the motion to put it on the floor. Be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached fraud, waste, and abuse policies and procedures as drafted by the town attorney and endorsed by the Treasurer, Finance Director.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
So, new, so we're done with unfinished business. New business, review and discussion on job descriptions for Parks and Recreation and Social Service Departments?
Yep, you have a large packet there. Those positions that have, in the past, not had a job, or in most cases, a job description update, like the Park Monitor, we've added some additional language in there, so that was only done maybe, I think, two, two years ago or less. But the rest are in effort to try and get job descriptions all come to the town council for approval. So this is our upgrading, updating the positions and having job descriptions in place for these positions. So all of them, at the top, with the exception of the seasonal clerical support, those positions are under the Park and Rec Department. So one, one through 10.
And who drafted them?
The Park Rec Director, Jessie, and her staff had gone through to prepare that in our format. Much of the language you see is probably familiar, that we have had the Labor Attorney upgrade for us when you get to items like physical demands, work environment, and then the last paragraph about the duties are above are intended and only as illustration of various types of work that may be forewarned in that type of language that came from the attorney. So we're just trying to tighten up the format and follow standardized approach to the job descriptions.
So I just have a comment on one of them, and it's number two. It's the Camp After-School Director. Because I know the after-school portion is a new thing that they've started this year, where they offer some after-school programming, but under the general purpose definition, they only talk about summer camp. And it's camp and after-school, so I think the wording just needs to be changed on that so that it encompasses both of those.
There's also in that same sentence there, the, there's no such thing as an assistant director. That needs to be tightened up, too. It's direction, recreation supervisor. There's no assistant director. Those are all.
So should we, should you take this back, Mike, and make some changes and corrections?
We can, or, I mean, I think it's just, those two are pretty straightforward, pretty simple in terms of recreation supervisor position will be consistent across, across all descriptions. And then for, as Counselor Angeloni pointed out, camp and after-school director, in the first, general purposes can be modified in terms of suggestion of all camps, not just summer camp. Unless there are other.
Is this just for discussion or do we need to vote on her? Vote to approve this?
It's vote to approve, because, yeah.
And you did say the Labor Attorney reviewed it?
The template has been designed and reviewed by the attorney, and the actual purposes, you know, duties and responsibilities are fill-ins from, as just, as known and described by the director.
Gotcha.
This doesn't include the assistant building official correct?
No, it doesn't.
That's going to be a separate item?
Right.
I don't see a motion in here, so you want us to just wing it with a motion, is that?
Yeah, just, exactly, yeah.
Move to approve the job descriptions as presented on the agenda this evening, with the exception of the two changes, one made by Counselor Angeloni and the other by the Finance Director, Anthony Esposito.
Second.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Okay. B, ABO position?
Yes, I put together a brief memo for you, looking at the cost and range for assistant building official. And then Anthony was able to provide what the loaded cost, if you will, with full benefits, estimating a total there of, if you were to proceed with this, what the impact would be in terms of an ongoing annual basis to add that, or to put that position to a full-time position. Looking at a salary range of between $69,076, and the current building official making $87 at this point. Again, Tom is also here, Tom Cowell, and let me answer any questions you may have, but again, it is going to, the projects are underway, and they'll be ramping up, and they'll be, in addition to those projects, taking a lot of time, of course, through this, you know, again, the high school is the longest project, probably 32 months, hopefully less, but could potentially, and the other projects anywhere from 12 to 24 months, and adding the MBIS in there as well. There are three major projects there, and in addition to just your regular garden variety permits of additions, pools, decks, what have you, this is, this is going to be an overtaxed department. And I think it, at this point in time, warrants it, and I think, again, speaking to the ability of meeting two objectives, of meeting the workload, but also in an opportunity to groom someone in terms of training in the ABO assistant building official position, meaning within Tom's timeframe of retirement succession planning. So I think we meet two goals at once. And again, I understand it's an expensive proposition and a budgetary impact, but I think it's warranted in this case based on the workload and the level that we have.
So what is the job market out there like? Just because we've experienced in the last few positions that we've hired for a very tight job market and very few applicants, so do you think you will be able to hire someone?
I think as a full-time position, we will be able to. I have at least one candidate I know that is in town.
Okay. All right. And so Anthony, the question is the $80,000-plus incremental cost for this year. Where is, where would that come from?
Good question. Well, the 80 is a full year, so you're already probably going to be halfway with time.
Okay.
I just let him bury the budget, and then we'll move it around at the end of the year, do a contingency appropriation as we get to the spring, get a better handle on it. Because another factor that came up is a lingering problem that we have, if you're hiring the gentleman to go out and do inspections, we're short of cars. So we've been relying on the police department as they get new vehicles to filter some down for us to use down here. And now you have a situation where you're going to have two people out doing inspections in one car. So as the time comes for us to buy our own cars down here instead of relying on hand-me-downs, or it works out well when you guys fund the police department and give them proper vehicles, and then what comes down here still has a half-life to it. In the past, we've gotten things that are like on their last leg. So it's a cycle that, you know, as long as you fund the front end and give them cars annually, what comes down to here for inspections and errands, things like that, still is a valuable resource. But that is going to be a problem that we're going to have when you're going to have two people out doing inspections. You're either going to have one person taking their own vehicle, paying mileage, which, you know, isn't the ideal situation from the town's perspective, when somebody out there in a town vehicle, identified as a town vehicle, showing on somebody's property doing inspections. So you want, you want that, that peace of mind. So just keep that in the back of your mind as well. So the 80 was, was full, full salary for the full year. Obviously, we're already a quarter of the way through, and it's not going to happen probably even maybe December 1. I'm not sure what the timeframe is, November 1. I'm not, not sure what the timeframe is for the process, but, so I, your worst-case scenario is 80. So you may be looking at 60 when all is said and done. We can, you know, as the year goes on, see how things shake out. There might be some savings other where we can move money around to cover it, or worst-case, you know, contingency is always the fallback, but we can just see how it goes.
I know contingency had a large balance this year, but we're also doing contract negotiations, and that's, was the bulk of contingency.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Anthony, whatever happened to the former chief's SUV?
The former chief's SUV, one of the detectives is using that currently.
Well, I thought it wasn't suitable as a patrol car.
I don't think he does like patrol and street patrol. He does as detective vehicle to go to court and things like that, and doing, you know, investigations along that line.
What about the bump down that happened in the fire department?
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Sorry, the bump down that happened with the fire department, with the chief's vehicle?
Yeah, the chief's vehicle, the, his old red one went to the fire marshal, and the fire marshal's hand-me-down Crown Vic, that was a former police car, is sitting back here that I use for errands around here, so not to take a other car for the limited number of pool that we have. So I use that for errands, respond to calls during the day if I need to with that one. But it's all decked out with lights and sirens, so it can't be used by the general population per se. But that's, that's, I think, a 2008 Crown Vic that served its useful life in the police department, then through the fire marshal's office, and now it's back down here. There is a value to keeping them supplied with decent vehicles, because it does filter down for the entire use of the town, so. Or we look to go out and purchase a car, you know, directly for here, which we've always kind of shied away from just because of the cost factor. It's cheaper to get a, you know, hand-me-down. I know that they are getting, I believe, two this year, if not more, I'm not remembered. I think it's two. So the problem we have is sometimes what comes off the line is, is not usable of any value, so you're basically, you're not getting two to come down to this part of the world. You may get, may get one, you may get none. They usually filter out and take the worst vehicles and trade them in, or sell them at the auction, things like that, so. It's, it's, just keep that in the back of your mind that we made, you know, the vehicle may be an issue for this new gentleman as well, new person, I should say, as well.
The other question I have is for Vinnie. Would it make sense, or does it not make sense, to list this job as a temporary assignment? My own, one of my concerns is that at the end of the school project, we don't end up with the extra position moving forward after that as a continued added expense. Does it matter if you list it as a temporary position or not?
There's no obligation to fund a position, so, I mean, you could deal with it through the budget process. I mean, even if it remained there in place, just don't fund it during the budget process. And if you don't fund it, then, then it'll, it'll just sit there as a vacancy. Or, or you could do exactly what you're, what you're saying, that this is a position that's for a limited period of time, like a seasonal hire, you know, you could set those restrictions on.
Might make it pretty hard to hire somebody, though, huh?
I just worry about hiring somebody under false pretenses, where they think they're going to have a job for the next 20 years or something, and in reality, in three years, when the high school project's done, we no longer have a need for it.
You have to keep in mind that I'm also going to retire, so you could phase that position out.
Right, I think that was part of the plan, of a succession. It gives us the opportunity for that. I think maybe what Ron said, what happens if, maybe you don't retire?
Oh, wait a minute, I'm gone. Tomorrow.
I don't think Anthony expects to have the job forever either, unfortunately.
So I would like to make a motion that we approve a full-time assistant building official effective immediately.
I'll second that.
Second.
Walt P. Yeah. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Cell tower agreement?
Yeah, this is part of the telecommunications and, oh, I'll let the town attorney speak to that who's for park review.
Yeah, so what you have before you has come from the subcommittee. This is a tower lease for the site at Tilcon, that it's part of the overall design of the system town-wide. And I believe they, so the tower owner has, I believe it's a 25-year lease with Tilcon, and our lease runs basically concurrently with the tower owner. And the way that this lease will work is the tower, the, the tower owner's ultimate plan is to have co-location at this site with Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, things, people like that. Until the tower owner gets those co-locators, the town will be obligated to pay rent, because it's, again, because it's not municipal land, it's private land, so the, it's a private tower. But once there's co-location, your rent's going to drop off. So it's being built as a municipal tower, because it's part of your overall plan. Because it's private property and a, and a private location, you're going to pay rent in the first instance. But once there's co-location by the providers, your, your rent will cease. But once there's co-location by the providers, your rent will cease. It's a standard form telecommunication tower lease. And the only add-in that we added, that I added, was in paragraph seven when you're talking about interference. So you're going to be the first user on the tower. So your frequency will be set at what it is. So the way it works, when you're co-locating on towers, you have various frequencies. If a subsequent user comes onto the tower and interferes with your frequency, then they will have, I believe it's 48 hours to correct that interference. And if they don't, then, you know, you could exercise your rights and the tenant that locates second could potentially be removed from the tower. So there was, there was no language in here to really, that had any teeth, so we added some language to protect the town in that regard. Other than that, like I said, it's a standard form lease that allows you to locate, and it's my understanding that this is part of Mr. Zito's ultimate townwide plan.
I have one question. Where it says on number four, the rent, the pad for your town equipment, they do, that does make the assumption that you can put a building there because you have to put that equipment into a building, correct? So that's assumed that...
So, yeah, so you're going to be able to put it, what's customary is that you'll put a shed?
Usually it has to be concrete, doesn't it?
Right, so you'll have a pad, a concrete pad, and on top of that, you'll have a shed within which you'll have your equipment contained.
So I just want to make sure that was...
And that's standard in the industry.
I'm a little bit confused. It seems somewhat amorphous that we have this agreement where we're going to pay rent until other users come onto the site. And at that point, our rent drops off. Why is there some sort of delay in getting these major suppliers of cell services to step up and take space?
I'm going to explain this.
All right. I'll sum it down a way down.
No. So when a developer is, has a telecommunications site, the standard process, take the municipality out for a moment, the standard process is they have to go to the siting council. And the process can take anywhere from eight months or longer. And it's more expensive. When it's a tower that's built for a municipal purpose, the process for the developer is streamlined, much less expensive, and they can get a tower up very quickly. But the first user is the municipality, and there has to be a local need. So in order to get the benefit of that streamlined process, the developer has to come in only with the municipality. So there's a delay in getting Verizon and AT&amp;T and ON.
So there's not an issue that we're not going to be able to get them? It's my question of time.
It's my understanding that once this process is complete, that the process to co-locate will happen almost immediately. Because I was informed by Mr. Coppins that he's already spoken over Verizon and AT&amp;T and that they plan on locating on this tower.
If I can add too, the other thing to keep in mind to Joe's point is that it's 14,400 a year on here, and that's still, you say nobody comes on the tower, right? That's still about, what, half of what we're paying at our other location.
Oh, sure.
So it would still be a substantial savings because once this tower goes up, we don't longer have a need for that other tower either.
Right. The Ojankowski site?
Right.
Will win any of that?
Yes. Yeah, so you're, I think you're spending almost $30,000 there. Basically, it's offsetting the real estate tax. Here, there's no quid pro quo with the real estate tax. You're going to be getting personal property tax on the tower and all the co-locators, you'll have personal property tax coming as well. So you are saving money with this site.
So another, so it doesn't matter where the police department ends up? This tower will service wherever it goes?
Correct.
Will be, okay.
As long as there's another tower on the other side of town so that we can communicate.
This, to answer your question, this is part of Mr. Zito's townwide layout.
So we need the Ojankowski tower to begin with? Isn't that the second tower then? I mean, if we put up this one?
No, this takes the place of that one theoretically. The other one will be down in Norfolk Center. So you'll have the one in Norfolk Center, you'll have this one, and then because you're on the state system...
But the one in Norfolk Center has not been approved yet.
Correct.
Oh, right. That has to go to the siting council.
Right. So, so it's not like Ojankowski is out as soon as this one goes up because the other one isn't approved and has to go through the whole siting council. And if the municipality isn't on it, it could take a year or better.
You wouldn't be able to bring the new system online without having both of those towers anyhow. But the other one, correct me if I'm wrong then, the other one in Norfolk Center also falls under the same standard as municipal use because we're going to be on it, correct? Or no?
Well, it's not the same process. So what the developer there, they'll go through the siting council process. They will likely make as part of their presentation that the municipality has a need for public service, public safety, radio service, and that's part of the reason for the location. I'm not familiar with that site and, you know, I'm not following it from the siting council standpoint. There, I believe, let's just say worst-case scenario, that that doesn't, to kind of follow the way your, it seems like your mind's going, if that site does not get approved in Norfolk Center, I believe Mr. Zito has backup plans still for other, like, again, you can reconsider municipal land, you can, you can look at other alternative sites, but you're probably, I think when I spoke to the chief, he said it's probably about two years off before there's a new, before we're going to switch over to the new system. So I believe it's about two years. Because the existing, and the town manager could correct me if I'm wrong, I think the existing contract we have is in place for another two years for the maintenance of it. And there was an issue with that, that, so, so I believe you're probably about two years out before you're going to be switching over. So we'll have to, we'll have to see what happens with that Norfolk Center site. But all things remain constant, it should be approved.
Yeah, and there's a, just as a point of information, the public informational meeting for that tower location in Norfolk is set for October 28th here at 7:00 PM. So the notice would be on the website and so forth for that particular tower. So that process is already underway.
We have a communications committee meeting tomorrow, and we're going to probably approve as Paul Zito's ready to present all the radio equipment. And I think he's planning on, you probably saw this agenda too, purchasing that probably next spring. So there may be some parts that'll probably start functioning before, within a year.
Again, this is, it's a process, right? Because in order for the entire system to function, you have to have all the sites. So the Tilcon site will advance, we will have our dedicated spot on the tower, and before we put our equipment on, Verizon and AT&amp;T may locate there, you know. So, because I suspect that there's, when we implement a new system, it's going to kind of be a, we're not going to put equipment out there to kind of just sit there dark and not being used. The new system will probably come up more in an organized way when it's all ready to go up. So, but this is, this is part of the overall process. So the Tilcon site is a necessary location based upon what Mr. Zito said. And then there is a second site that will be required, and at the moment, it's planned to be in Norfolk Center. So as the town manager said, the part of the siting council process is that there's a local public informational session. That's an opportunity for the public to come out and ask questions of the developer and for the town officials to meet with the developer and ask, you know, your concerns. And it's informal, you know, but it is, it is a public process. It'll then go to the siting council for their hearing process. Ultimately, they'll float a balloon like we've seen before, and that's when you'll probably get more public response. But...
And I haven't looked at this, but is there anything on here that says we don't start paying the lease until our equipment is on the tower?
I spoke to the developer, and that is, that is the case.
Because we don't want to be stuck paying Ojankowski in there at the same time, two years before our system is up and ready to go.
Correct.
Okay.
So did the Norfolk developer follow the same process as ARX in regards to being a municipal tower?
It's, again, it's not a municipal tower. It's, and it's slightly, the ARX proposal was a proposal to locate on municipal property, which would have provided the municipality with revenue because you would have been the owner of the land. So like, you would have been in the shoes of Tilcon, using the Tilcon as an example, right? You would have, the tower developer would have been paying you rent, and you would have had a location on the tower at no expense. And you would have had, there would have been no rent at all because of, again, it's, you're the owner of the land, and that would have been factored into the developer's costs. The difference with the Norfolk site is it's private property, so it's not a municipal tower the way the Tilcon site is. The Tilcon site is being developed specifically initially because there's a municipal need for it. The Norfolk site is being proposed regardless of the municipal need for the AT&amp;T and Verizon because there's a need for cell service in that area. So that's kind of the distinction, and that's why the process is different. So while it is part of our overall system, it's not being initiated as a municipally, as a municipal needed tower.
And that was the developer's decision to develop it like that?
Correct, because they had, they had planned to do that regardless of what the municipality...
Okay.
Right.
So who approached Tilcon? How did it, how did this site come about, Tilcon? Because it's kind of like the first that, I never heard Tilcon in the mix before on all of the sites. So did the developer, ARX, go from the town to Tilcon?
I mean, I'm going to, I was not involved in that process. I believe...
I think, I think it was, it was some individuals on the communications committee that approached Tilcon. Some actual members of that committee.
But...
And talked to them.
So ARX was the same developer that originally was looking at town property?
Correct.
Okay.
But I believe ultimately, Mr. Zito laid out his proposal for where towers were needed. And they, each tower was in a geographic area. And while, you know, committee members may have had relationships that caused it to end up where it is, Mr. Zito said, you know, basically, here's a circle, we need, we need property in this circle. Here's another circle, we need property in this circle. And then, you know, we funnel down to where it could go. And, you know, that's, that's kind of, so it's really, it was driven by Mr. Zito and his, his strategy for the radio communications system.
So do we have to approve this agreement?
Yes. So just, so what you have before you is a lease that would be binding the town to locate on this tower, and it's being brought to you because it's a contract that needs to be approved by the legislature.
Now, I have one other question. When we talked in the committee, we also talked about the fact, maybe the town should have some kind of a contract with Tilcon just to be safe.
Right.
You know, all of a sudden, ARX can't throw us off the tower, that we should also have some kind of, that did come up in our committee. I don't know if they just...
Yeah, I brought that up because the concern was that, because their lease is whatever, 20-year lease or whatever. So at the end of that lease, if ARX and Tilcon had a falling out and Tilcon said, get rid of this tower, well, now half of our emergency system is gone.
Right.
And that we have some sort of an agreement with Tilcon to say, listen, if that should happen, we have X amount of time to find another location and relocate and still be able to maintain that site.
Right. So two things in response to that. One is, again, when you don't own the land and you're a tenant of, so you're a subleasing, right? That's what happens when you don't own the land. You know, you're subject to the terms of who you're leasing from. If we were to go try to do an N-run to say to Tilcon, hey, we're here, we're a tenant of your lessee, but we want to have a side deal just in case, you know, we have to be very careful because you could arguably tortuously interfere with ARX's contract with Tilcon, which would then expose the town to damages. We did, we did, the chief and I did discuss it. There was some kind of, I'll say off-the-record discussion, ARX, we also had a conversation with ARX, and we were confident that the term of ARX's lease was long enough that it was not really a matter of concern to risk exposing the town to liability for the tortuous interference with ARX's contract. And I think Tilcon's representative even said, no one's ever seen the concern become a reality when it comes to a telecommunications tower. You know, a developer doesn't, you know, they're doing this, it's an investment, and, you know, it's a return on their investment there. So they, they have their finances projected out over a period of time, and that's why they have a 25-year lease. You know, while it's true, we don't know what may happen in 20 years from now or, you know, but, and this is why we try to drive these towers to municipal land, so you have control. But when it's not on municipal land, you can't control every situation. But the only thing I can say to you is, and I've looked into it, I did some research, I haven't found any situation where the concern that you raised was a reality. So, you know, I mean, in the future, if there was an opportunity to put her on municipal land, that's, that's where, you know, it would be recommended to go for a number of reasons. But in this situation, I think having the lease that you have that allows you to be there for 25 years is the best, again, this is an industry standard, and I don't believe you're going to have a situation where Tilcon is going to tell the developer that they have to remove the tower. I've just never seen it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract for a tower site lease with ARX.
Second.
One more question. Have you seen the lease between Tilcon and ARX?
Yes.
And does it have any provision for the end of the, for the end of the 25-year period as to what happens to the tower and the equipment? Is it like a shot and center lease where the property, the improvement reverts to the landowner at the end of the long-term lease?
Short answer is yes, but, and I'm trying to pull it up quick. I didn't provide it to you because I didn't want to turn it into a public document, and that's why I didn't share it with the body. But I believe they may even have a right of renewal at the end of 25 years. But short answer is yes. At the end of the lease, the property owner has the right to compel the developer to remove it at the developer's cost because the property owner may say, I don't want to have a tower here anymore.
So how hard would it be to get an option from Tilcon to step into the shoes of the developer if we deem that tower essential to our operations?
I would say, once, once the contract's in place, we could explore getting, you know, an option. I don't know, your system probably is going to need to be upgraded in 25 years, I would imagine. And I don't know what technology is going to be in place at that point in time. So while we can plan based upon what we know today, you know, it may not be... So while we can plan based upon what we know today, you know, it may not be...
Sure.
You know, it may not be a need at that location.
It may be a trolley car, and everyone would be using buses by then, I understand. I'm just trying to keep our options open.
Right, right.
They'd probably be up in there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Our next item is opt-out of Public Act 21-29, Parking Spaces for Dwelling and Dwelling Units and Accessory Apartments.
So the state legislature adopted Public Act 21-29. 21-29 changes the law with respect to zoning regulations in a number of ways. One of the ways is that the new law provides that a municipal zoning regulation may not, so this new legislation prohibits zoning regulations from requiring more than one parking space for each studio or one-bedroom dwelling, or more than two parking spaces for dwelling units with two or more bedrooms. So it's a, it's a, it's a way for the state to try to manage zoning on more of a statewide level, to try to make zoning more uniform across the state. But there is a, they provided a municipal option to opt-out, and I believe if you don't, if you do not opt-out by January 1st of 2023, then you can never opt-out. And so by opting out, you're allowing your municipality to main control over parking within your municipality, and how much of it you should have. So the way that the process is initiated is at the zoning commission level, and the zoning commission, the zoning commission held a public hearing, voted by at least two-thirds of its members to opt-out, stated its reasons for opting out, and published notice of its decision. The law then requires to final, finalize the opt-out, that the legislative body vote to opt-out. So if you do not vote to opt-out, then you are subject to the state law going forward. If you vote to opt-out, then you are agreeing with your zoning commission that you, as a municipality, should maintain control over the parking requirements within your town. It requires a two-thirds vote of this body to pass, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but it's pretty straightforward.
So when you opt-out, you just have to opt-out once and it's good? You don't have to keep doing it every year?
It's a one-time opt-out.
Okay.
Yeah. There are a couple of new laws that you have opportunity to opt-out, so you may have additional opt-outs coming at you in the future.
Okay.
And if we ever wanted to reverse that, we could reverse that?
Well, you could always, ultimately, if you're, you decided that you wanted to conform to the state law? You could just, the zoning commission, in a sense, this is the one time that this body has an opportunity to have a say in what the zoning regulations set, right? Because opting out requires town council approval. In the future, if the zoning commission decided, you know, we should just conform to the state laws, then they would amend their regulations to conform. Right. It's not like you would opt back in.
Yep.
You would just conform your rights to the state law.
I'd like to make a motion, the town council of North Branford hereby asks to opt-out of Public Act 21-29, Parking Spaces for Dwelling Units and Accessory Apartments. The reasons for opting out are as follows. Existing parking space standards are not onerous or preventive of producing accessory apartments. Town's existing zoning accessory apartment regulations are liberal and successful. New state standards are not consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development.
Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Financial report?
Financial report in front of you for September 30th, compared to September 30th of last year. Again, the same target items that I focus on, the top-line property tax collections, trending ahead of last year at 53.7, compared to 52.9. Overall revenue is up compared to last year. On the expenditure side, in the bottom line, it's about almost 2% greater. If you look at the board of education line, that's where the majority of the difference is there, about 14% last year, 16.8% this year. Aside from that, there's nobody overexpended yet, and if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to address them. Remains unremarkable.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Unremarkable.
That's critical, Anthony.
I'd just like to recognize Councilman Juan, and it's been a pleasure to work with you all the years, doing financials and pension, all those things.
Okay, tax refunds?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Citizen's statements and petitions?
Nobody on Facebook?
I actually had a question. I wrote it down somewhere. I was wondering about the COVID numbers, and where the vaccination numbers came from, and if they incorporated any of the people that had already had COVID. How do you know exactly in North Branford who has been vaccinated?
It's all run through the state's data system, as far as, my information is that they're coming by way of the Department of Public Health, right, to the east shore, our local health department, they're getting their numbers from the state.
So all those people on record getting vaccinated wherever are all funneled through? And none of that considers the people that have natural immunity because they've had COVID? Or does that incorporate those numbers as well? Or you don't know?
They're not included in the vaccinated. They're not considered vaccinated if you've had it.
Not if you didn't get the shot.
Only if you've been vaccinated.
Right.
Only if you got the shot.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Just a second.
Jill, do you have the packet? Did she leave you the original sheet or the packet?
Yeah.
They're bound.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I have a piece.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive section under CGS Section 1-200, 6A Personnel Issues for the Town Manager's Evaluation.
Second. To include...
The town manager.